Item number 10 is the presentation of the library community-wide survey results by Folkways. We have Carissa Hansen, the library director for the city of West Fargo with us this evening.
Good evening, Commissioner President Dartis and commissioners. Tonight I am excited to present to you the results of the community-wide survey that we conducted last spring in partnership with Folkways. And you'll recall that we undertook this project to better understand the needs and goals and interests and values of the West Fargo community so that we could build library services based on those. And so I'm going to turn it over to Joe Burgum of Folkways to discuss the results. And then we'll end with me talking about some major themes that came out of those results that the library could address, and then we'll take any questions.
Good evening, Mr. Burgum, welcome.
Good evening, great to be here with all of you. Thanks for taking the time to learn about our findings from the work that's been conducted over the last year with the West Fargo Public Library. I do want to give credit to Simone Yai and Leslie Bugle who've been working on this project with me but are unable to be here this evening. So as we kick off, just want to review a timeline of the work at hand. We'll go through all the deliverables and the work that we've been working on over the last year. But you can see that it's about a year of work that we've been undertaking, working on being dynamic with the community as well as public health to ensure that we can get the best response from the community as it relates to informing the strategy that Carissa and her team are building at the West Fargo Public Library. So the first thing I want to talk about in our work is the persona building. So we use a process called human-centered design. We believe that every project needs to start with understanding the community itself. So that's conversations, interviews, looking for those pain points and problems that community members are having. When we build out personas, what it allows us to do is really create stories, individuals, then staff can use to solve problems. Some sort of anecdotal information, we're able to really say, nope, this is a pain point that we heard and we can identify with an individual. So these were the five personas that we built out of about 15, 20 interviews that we conducted. So we worked on that in October. As we moved into November, we started thinking about, sorry, my cursor inverted on the roller here, non-user personas. So thinking about individuals who don't identify as going to the library. How do we understand what people are thinking about? It's sort of like, how do you find folks that don't floss their teeth? It's not really a group people identify with. And so we had a lot of work to really find folks that are not going to the library to try to better understand their perspective. What are they thinking about within the community? This was really important because it helped us inform the survey that was conducted this spring, which the goal was really to better understand what is the general public thinking about when they think about the public library. In December, we worked with library staff to conduct a user experience workshop. And so what we did is we convened digitally and we took these personas and started thinking about what are the problems these individuals have and what solutions might be able to come forward to solve their needs. A lot of really great ideas came forward from this workshop that I know that the library team is thinking about, an example of how those personas get put into play right of way. How do we really think about the individuals that we're serving and what their problems are? As we came into January, we conducted an events audit. We reviewed all of the events from 2019, interviewed staff working on events, and then provided a set of recommendations. I have to say, it is really, really impressive what the West Fargo Public Library team is doing when it comes to community programming. The number of events being conducted is outstanding, the quality is really high, and our recommendations really came down to sort of good-to-great opportunities. Thinking about how do you improve marketing, messaging, feedback, and some systems improvements from a technical standpoint that'll allow that team to be able to do even more events with the folks they have in place. So this brings us to sort of the bulk of the work and the findings for all of you to hear today. So in April, we started with the survey live into the community. Really pleased with the number of responses that we had. There were 856 total responses, and cleaning that up based on geography and qualifiers ended with about 776 individuals that filled out the survey. Really remarkable and really fantastic that we had 143 student responses, those under the age of 18. That is not a common thing for a survey like this. And so I think as you're thinking about the vision of West Fargo, the engagement from youth is so critical. If youth can see themselves here in West Fargo, there is a bright future for this community. And this type of engagement is really paramount to being able to make sure that youth are heard. So that, 633 were over the ages of 18. So we'll do a little bit of breakdown of the responses. So as mentioned, the 18 under and over break up there, and you can see the distribution over the quadrants. This correlates really well to the age spread of West Fargo, average age being about 33 years old. So it was good to see that we had enough respondents of the survey to start getting some of that baseline matching with the demographics of the community. So looking at responses by area as well. So we worked on creating nine distinct quadrants within the community of West Fargo in the service area of the public library. Again, this also very closely matches the density distribution by neighborhood. So this helped us really inform that we had a good data set and that those two things lined up. So we can see that the highest segment of people lived closest to the West Fargo library that responded, if that makes sense, they're coming into the library, they knew about that was going on, and a good spread there. So next, looking at the respondents, we asked people to identify into three different categories. Yes, you go to the library, yes, you go to the library not frequently, and no, users, sometimes users, and non-users of the library. A third of folks that responded to the survey are coming regularly, and the other two-thirds fell into that category of non-regular user or have not been to the library. So when we look at kind of the breakdown of that, how people identify with usership by age, 35 to 44, we had the lowest percentage of non-users, meaning those individuals are the most likely to be at the library. In between, same for 65 to 74, the highest percentage of regular users. And when we look at the neighborhoods, and I apologize, I don't have a map breakdown here, but areas two, three, and five had high percentages of folks that were regular users, and then areas one and six have the highest percentage of non-users of the library. Also, we saw a high percentage of retirees and those that were unemployed using the library services. I think this is a real testament to the public service that a public library is, as well as individuals with children, particularly those with more than one children, were much more likely to be visitors of the library. So we'll dive in now to affinity statements. So we really wanted to spend time thinking about public sentiment when it came to the library in West Fargo, and how can that inform public projects? And so we'll go over three public sentiment questions that we asked. These were simply presenting a statement to respondents of the survey and asking them to identify, do you strongly agree, somewhat agree, neither agree or disagree, somewhat disagree, or strongly disagree? So those five options. So the first question we asked was, the West Fargo Public Library is adding value to the greater West Fargo community? Tremendous response here, and able to see those that strongly agree and somewhat agree. So either 90%, of respondents felt that the West Fargo Public Library is adding value to the community. So taking a look at that, we did a breakdown by income as well as different areas to see, you know, kind of outliers or any other information. So area three had the greatest percentage of individuals that said they strongly agree, and area one was the most apathetic, so the least. Also found that individuals between the household incomes between $25,000 and $50,000 had a very high affinity for the library. When we look at that by age, we saw that those 65 and up had a very strong affinity with the library, as well as those between the ages of 25 and 34. The next affinity question that we asked was, the West Fargo Public Library is in need of upgraded facilities. So you can see here a breakdown of the overall responses. 75% of people agreed or strongly agreed that the facilities does need to be improved. When we looked at that by non-users, we saw that there was a greater sense of low disagreement. So non-users didn't think that it not needed to be upgraded, but a high level of apathy, which makes sense. If you're not going to the library, you don't really have an opinion perhaps on the facilities. But when we look at infrequent users, folks that had been to the library, you see there that again, over 70% would agree or somewhat agree that the facility does need to be upgraded. And when we look at respondent areas here, we see that zone six had a very high response, and zone one had a smaller, 60% still agreed but less than. Again, by age, we found that those between the ages of 35 and 44 agreed the most that the facility needed to be upgraded, and those between the ages of 55 and 65 agreed less. When we look at this and in conversations we're having with Carissa, is really starting to be able to identify groups and audiences that we can think about are champions for the library, or groups that perhaps need a greater invitation. You know, why is it that those between the age 54 and 64 are not using the library when we know that there are many of them that find it valuable? So this starts to inform strategy of outreach, communication, program development, and thinking about if there is to be a building built perhaps, what work needs to be done in terms of engaging the community, ensure they understand the value. So the final statement was the affinity statement, I'm willing to financially support services that benefit others even if I may not personally benefit. So here we saw that there was a high percentage of residents in West Fargo that back public projects. I think that's our understanding here, that people, if they see the value in something, even if they themselves are not going to it, believe in the public benefit for the community. Again, when we look at the age breakdown between 19 and 24, we had the highest percentage of somewhat agree, somewhat strongly agree. And then between the ages of 55 and 64, we had the highest percentage of disagree, still only about 12%. Area six had the highest percentage of people who strongly agree. So it's interesting looking at some of these, we looked at the map, looked at some of these neighborhoods, to start asking ourselves, okay, why is this area feel so strongly? And I think that'll get into some of our recommendations here. So some other things that we wanted to learn from the community was a perspective on transit time. We asked people to define what is a trip or a reasonable trip look like convenient distance? And so 51% of residents in West Fargo believe that's a five to 10-minute drive. So when we think about neighborhood development, walkable places, that's a contributing factor in terms of where people will go. Of course, those of you that have family or kids, folks with children had a narrower range of what was a convenient trip or willing to drive, and people in area six were willing to drive farther, which makes sense based on amenities that they have. Here's a breakdown of those with children, without children, just to see a little bit of that separation in terms of what is a convenient trip and how far someone is willing to drive. Asking people about where they choose to live and work based on driving and access to things. So I think the big takeaway here, and this is something that the library team had already been working on, but I think a real emphasis in mobile programming. When we think about access to programming and people's desire to be within adjacency of that, the ability to have a facility that can serve all residents within five to 10 minutes is not possible, of course. But the mobile programming that libraries doing is making a huge difference, be able to reach people where they're at, and to be able to move dynamically within the community. So as I touched on earlier, we think this research and survey really helps us identify sort of biggest advocates for the public library and groups to connect with. Those over the age of 65, that demographic of 35 to 44, neighborhood zones three and six, those income between age, or household income between $25,000 and $50,000, and then women, were all large advocates for the library based on our findings. Areas that need advocacy, or an invitation, I would say, to the story of the library, those other age groups as mentioned, best reached by Facebook, radio, television, email newsletters, and then men. We had very few men respond to the survey, which is interesting despite the amount of outreach that we did. Another thing that we did was open-ended questions. So these open-ended responses helped us understand how do West Fargoans feel about events, community, where are they going, how do they spend their free time? All these questions, open-ended responses have been shared with library staff to be able to help them continue to understand how to better serve the community. Here's some interesting word clouds. So this is interest in learning. The darker and the larger, the more folks responded. So it's interesting just seeing thematics across age and other backgrounds in terms of what people are interested in. I'd say the community of West Fargo is eager to learn. There's definitely a growth mindset here in folks that are keen on continuing to have access. Regular attending activities, you can see here that theater performances, church, sporting events, cruise nights, farmers markets, street fairs, all things that people mentioned as things that they enjoy attending. So overall, as mentioned, this is a really solid book of information. Carissa's going to come up and talk about how they're already starting to implement this, but this level of research is here to really help understand how to better serve members of the community who are not currently using the library. As we built out the personas and the other parts of our work, those were tools to better understand how do we serve those that are already coming to the library? But with the survey response, we can start to understand where are those groups in the community that need more outreach, that invitation to come and participate in the library? So I'll invite Carissa up, and she's going to share more about what the library team's been using this information for and how they're developing programming. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burgum.
Thanks, Joe. So next, I just want to talk about some of the prominent themes that came out of our review of all of the information that we have at our disposal throughout, through this project and other sources. And with all of this information, we've been able to identify an initial list of needs that we as a library think that we are probably well-suited to address. And then next, we're going to be working with staff and the library board to determine what among those to prioritize in the coming years. And we aren't necessarily going to be able to do all of them, but we'll set goals around some of these areas and we'll prioritize them and design programs and services around them. And so I'm really excited, and I think that a lot of these needs aren't probably the library of a lot of people's childhood. I think these are exciting, these are some new and progressive ways that we can provide service to the community. So the first one of those that I want to highlight, one theme that came out is this, everybody needs services and resources in which they see themselves in order to feel welcome and take full advantage of what is available at the library, especially those people facing barriers. So the library has historically served many new Americans, and we knew that going into the project, but one thing that we wanted to think about was how can we serve them more purposefully? And so through the interviews and the survey that Folkways conducted, we discovered some of the ways that we could make the library more inclusive. And if we are looking back to our personas that were devised through the interviews, and we look at our Halima persona, one of, I think the pain points that she brought forward highlight this really well. Halima would like to invite more of her family and community members to the library, but they don't think there's anything there for them. Though she uses online resources, she doesn't often check out books for herself or her kids because they are not in her first language. And on top of this, survey respondents talked about a desire to learn about other cultures as well. So I think the library is full of potential to really be a connection point in the community for education and representation of multiple cultures. Next, parents need services for their families in close and convenient locations. We're talking five to 10 minutes or less in order to maximize resources available to them. And certainly tonight, you saw the survey results that demonstrated that. So those results in conjunction with interviews strongly support library efforts to bring services directly to kids and parents in the community. And I think Andrea's pain point up here encapsulates the need for that mobile outreach really well. And it makes sense, nearly 9% of West Fargo's population is under the age of five, which is a lot. Quarter of the population is under the age of 18. And we saw that the more children that families have, the more likely they are to be regular library users. And parents are looking to the library as a way to supplement their children's learning. They're looking at it as a way, as a tool, I should say, to get their kids engaged in learning, get them excited about learning, and have positive relationships with learning and reading. And the library is an affordable solution for them to do that. We saw that time and time again through all the results. But to do that, we have to meet them where they are. And we're far away from a lot of them are building, at least physically. So, and so in order to make the library more convenient, we have to meet them where they are through mobile programming because they're trying to meet a lot of different needs with limited resources and time. Next, parents and children birthed to age five need a way to develop literacy and social skills in order to ensure success in kindergarten and beyond. Survey respondents ranked early childhood education as a top investment in West Fargo. Again, not surprising, given how many children between the ages of zero and five there are, and because before kindergarten time is really a critical, critical years in a child's life because it's at that time that the foundation is really set for social experiences and word recognition and number recognition and all of that. And I think the other thing to keep in mind too with this is that there's no universal preschool education in North Dakota. And it's only just recently, actually, I saw that some statewide funding for pre-K education for four-year-olds will become available. So like tuition-free options for early childhood education are still really limited, especially when you're looking at that zero to three age bracket. And because of our staff expertise at the library, we're uniquely positioned to put our resources to work on behalf of the community in this area. And it's already a strength that we have in 2020. I think about 40% of our programs were early literacy programs. But again, that mobile outreach piece of it is going to be extremely important because many kids and caretakers can't easily get to the library building. Next, teens need additional support outside of school to develop personal interests, build life skills, and have real-world experiences in order to be confident and prepared for their futures. We definitely saw this come through in the youth survey for sure. And I am also knowledgeable about this because I've been able to be a representative on the school district's Equity and Inclusion Task Force this year. So I've learned a lot about how the schools are working really hard to get students' choice ready, in other words, ready for their futures. So they're working to help students explore their interests, learn about options after they're done with school, have real-world experiences out in the community is something that they're really focused on. But what keeps coming up time and time again is that school resources are just limited. So they're looking to tap community partners and experts to really foster this. And I included the graph on the right because this is the ethnic distribution of respondents to our youth survey. So you can see, it's quite a lot more diverse than the responses to the adult survey, but it makes sense because the breakdown of students in the West Fargo School District, it is a lot more diverse than West Fargo as a whole. But I think that shows you that West Fargo is going to continue to change and diversify, and that whole piece about people needing to see themselves and resources available is going to become even more important. Finally, how about adults? So for, in the adult survey, we ask questions like, what do you do with your free time? Is there anything that you're interested in learning about? What kind of skills do you want to develop? If you had two hours of unrestricted free time, what would you do with it? So we ask things like that. And what came out of it, some of the major themes were these. Adults need ways to reduce stress, make informed life decisions, and take care of themselves in order to improve personal well-being. A lot of people talked about, I want to get better at taking care of me, I want to get more organized, I want to learn about my health, I want to learn about how to make good financial decisions, I want to have good access to things to read. Another thing that came out is adults need ways to learn new things in order to expand their horizons on limited budgets. Interestingly, a strong aspiration to read and a love of physical books specifically was a finding of the survey, and reading was actually the most frequently put response to the questions about free time, which was interesting. So there's definitely a learning and reading culture in West Fargo that's really strong. And finally, adults need an outlet to learn hands-on arts and crafting skills to be more self-sufficient and express themselves, but they don't necessarily have those skills, tools, or teachers to help them learn on their own. So a lot of people were interested in developing practical, do-it-yourself-type skills to be self-sufficient and save money, but also just to have a creative outlet. Finally, I am always looking for ways throughout this project and just other facets of what we do at the library to make sure that we're aligned with the West Fargo 2.0 plan and the ways that we can work to advance our citywide goals. And I thought it was interesting because I saw a lot of overlap between the survey results that we gathered and some of the market segments that were brought up in the 2.0 plan. And the 2.0 plan talks about West Fargo being a really child-centered community, people are focused on building a better life, there's a strong reading culture, strong interest in cultural activities, and do-it-yourself and crafting are specifically mentioned. Another component of the 2.0 plan that stood out to me in relation to our project is family orientation and curating a community that has child-friendly amenities will be important. So I think you can really easily see the market segments outlined in the 2.0 plan matching the responses in the community survey. So I think one that tells us we're right on track with our focus areas that we've identified, we got a good survey sample. And I think number two, it shows us that we can very easily align our goals with the 2.0 plan. Finally, some other portions, some portions in the 2.0 plan mention the library specifically, but there are some aspects and connections to be made between the needs that we identified in our project with Folkways and the 2.0 plan where the library isn't specifically mentioned. And so these are some areas where myself and staff see ways that the library board and the city commission could work together to really leverage the library to advance citywide goals. So the 2.0 plan talks about this increased mix of uses within neighborhoods, and it says, an ideal mix would allow residents to meet all of their daily needs within a short walking distance. So again, that extending residents' access to library services through outreach and satellite locations is really a key way to advance this goal in the 2.0 plan. And then the other one that I want to highlight, developing the West Fargo Creative Spaces Initiative. The plan talks about coworking spaces and maker spaces and downtown and cultural centers. And in many cities, that's the downtown public library because the public library is really a connection point for all of those things that's available to all residents. So the library has already been a key player in the creative environment in West Fargo and a key contributor to arts and cultural opportunities in the city. And I think it's no secret that we need to work towards a change in our facility in the coming years to fully realize a goal like this, but the library is a real opportunity to draw in community members of all ages and backgrounds through an intentional space to learn and make and create. And that is all we have, but I just want to end by saying a big thanks to the city commission for allowing us to do this project. We have such rich information to understand West Fargo, so I think that we're really well-positioned to move forward and be focused and really prioritize, and I think that's a great thing. And so I feel very grateful to all of you for allowing us to do this project. And so now we'll just open it up for questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Hansen. Questions for Mrs. Hansen?
I probably have.
Mr. Simmons?
Thank you. I probably have one more for Joe, Carissa, if anything, Joe. You've done these, I'm assuming, in the past, correct, to other organizations such as libraries, correct?
We've done other community outreach surveys, but this is the first time we've worked directly with the public libraries.
So I noticed how many, the number of respondents was less than 1,000, and we have how many, 40, what do we have for citizens?
Forty-one to forty-two.
Forty-one to 42,000. What were you expecting, you know, for a general?
Yeah, yeah, we were really pleased with the number of responses. I think that level, that percentage, like I said, it's hard to sometimes say that it's a number of responses that makes the data set qualified. The fact that we had enough to hit on those distributions of population by age, by geography, those things sort of gave us a seal to say this number of responses is statistically relevant. And so we felt really good about that. I think the difference in getting more surveys often comes down to budget in terms of the ability to spend more on marketing and storytelling in order to get the word out. And so we felt really good about the number of responses in that survey.
Okay, I just noticed some of them, like, they were like less than 5%, 2% of, that's not very many respondents in one category, especially the 19 to 24, that was really low. I'm assuming they're just all probably busy doing their jobs, or?
Yeah.
It just seemed, I guess I'm not an expert in this, I don't know. I mean, so if that's what you say it is, I'm fine with that. I just, just looked low to me.
Yeah, no, absolutely. No, it's a good question. I mean, I think we're always thinking about, how do we ensure that the data is statistically relevant?
Right.
You know, how can we draw insights from that? And so I think that's where, really with any sort of public survey, the intent isn't to have it be a yes-no vote for all of you to make a decision. It's a data set to help inform a strategy that we can then move forward on. And so in working with Carissa and having this, is we feel really good about the response information that's qualified to then inform the strategy. We would never recommend going to the public with a survey like this to say, do you want a new building or not? It's a loaded question, there's a lot to unpack behind that. That's where you start to gather that sort of sentiment, then be able to say, okay, this can inform a strategy to then say, hey, as elected leaders, how do you make a decision with the best information you have at hand?
Okay, thank you.
I would just say in closing, having worked with the library system here, as West Fargo continues to grow and think about how do you deliver services, how do you provide quality of life to residents, most people hope the trash comes on time and water gets to the house. They're not necessarily thinking about cities as a differentiator, but I think the public library is a really unique opportunity because it is part of the city. And it is an amazing chance to really differentiate the community and provide a really high quality of life to individuals through public services. And Carissa and the team here are doing a fantastic job, and I think are thinking really creatively into the future. Just like cities, the library system in this process has developed a strategic plan moving forward, and to be able to think about, you can serve an individual of age five, and you might serve them again when they have their own children. And so what is that opportunity to really create an impact on an individual's life? So I just have to say, it's a shining star in the community here at West Fargo, but I think it might go unnoticed. So I hope there's an opportunity to celebrate the library and as an arm of the city, the work that it's doing to improve people's lives. people's lives.
Thank you. Any additional questions for Mr. Burgum or Mrs. Hanson? All right. This is just a presentation to, of the library's community-wide survey results. This is not really an actionable item for this evening. Item number eleven is to the preliminary twenty, twenty-two budget. Mrs. Fiss, City Administrator.